How you doing?
Almost.
Hi. Oh, you're fine. Yes. I had Sean also. I'm like.
Our kids left the house. Chris and Karen.
Well, you know, I thought he should.
Not that we didn't make the decision.
No, no. That's the first time.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
One more, Tony. Tony, let me say this, if you go into, to take your time, if you, if it's, we get into the six o'clock hour, then I'm gonna stop you if I could and open up City Council and I'll let you finish and let anyone else. City Council's got any questions. So, take your time, don't feel rushed or anything.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I appreciate the opportunity last week to talk about the Housing Preservation, Housing and Community Preservation Fund. This is a concept that really came out of the Sales Tax Referendum idea. Presently Habitat builds houses. We've been doing that for fifty years in this country. We've been doing it thirty years here in Loudoun County. We've built about one hundred and thirty homes and we've also repaired more than one hundred and seventy, most of those being with seniors and individuals with disabilities. I think it's important to highlight that a lot of folks identify Habitat for Humanity as a community leader, a community builder, bringing together different entities within the community to make a better life possible for those who cannot access an affordable mortgage or a safe decent home otherwise. But it's not just about building affordable housing, it is about preserving affordable housing. And that's the crux of it here today. We're gonna get to a video in just a second. I wanna highlight one piece. On this slide here, you're gonna see there are four different buckets, as I call them, one, two, three, four, Critical Repair, Rebuild Initiative, Community Partnerships, and Modern Income Support. These are, if, if this is passed by City Council and it is passed by the residents of Lenore City, this is where we see the funds having the greatest impact, starting with two of the programs that are already in place, the Critical Repair Program and the Rebuild Initiative. We're gonna focus the first part of our presentation on the Critical Repair Program, just so that you all can see the impact that's already being done in this community by Habitat for Humanity and all of our partners. And then, we will discuss a little bit about what the rest of these buckets look like as, as we get further into the presentation. So let me ask Chris Callahan, our Director of Homes, Home Buyer Services, Homeowner Services, to come up and join me. I'm gonna get this video going. Now, you all saw this last week, we're hoping we have better technology.
We lived here eighteen, nineteen years and it's a great place to live.
We did, actually in my mother's house, after she passed, we moved up here.
It's seven years old. Has had a lot of words here on it, roofs, windows, in the house, cords everywhere.
I was a...
Let me ask Rachel, I'm trying to get this widescreen.
It was a problem with the two by fours all the way around.
Anytime we could walk out the door, you were, it was pouring down from the door. Every time I said it's gonna rain, I just panicked because I thought, well, I don't know if it's gonna cave in or not.
We did a home assessment. First thing we saw was front porch, which was empty. The carport, screen porch, provided out through car lights and water damage over the years, which has caused a certain condition. The house had a little issue more than what they had.
Habitat made it very, very easy. Chris came out, left the forms, all we had to do was a commode, sign, wait.
But when they come up here, they did very well.
Every day we'd be careful.
I picked it up all the time.
You know, I'm, I'm not a trained sociologist, I'm not a trained medical case worker, but I can come in and look at the structure of a home and say, here's what we need to repair. It's gonna holistically help the family, not just have a structured within their lifestyle. So, once we leave, there's still being taken care of.
Well, I'm disabled. We get a porch here, and Rain forced to get a rack put in, which now I can easily. I go to handicap vans and now I can get up, build a store, something I can do to get away from her and she'd get away from me for a bit too. That alone knowing I could get out is a big plus.
We saw the ramp that he was using, was a piece of plywood. Nowhere near the slope of that ADA ramp. It's made, it was slick, slippery, and his accessibility was very limited.
It was very unsafe. I had to take a good, deep breath and say, how long, yeah, because it is warm, peace of mind.
Yes.
He had had a Billy Joe for everything. Billy Joe's age, she's had her, her health issues. So it was very difficult for the both of them to take care of each other. Putting in the ramp took the burden off Billy Joe as far as how much care do I have to give Cecil? That's lessened to a degree, Cecil gained his mobility freedom.
Look what they did. They, you know, I'm starting to cry now.
That porch, we did all that, carport, out there, it's great.
And we are excited so much about this porch.
Porch means a lot. Now that I have the ramp, I can actually pull myself up and down with my regular chair. But before, I had to use a selected chair and so Rain was out of the question. She's got four chairs in it decorated, it's made her happier, she's been a happier person. I've been a happier person and I think the neighbors would be happy.
I know they are.
Cecil is thrilled because he's got more freedom. The Billy Joe feels great because she feels safe and it's given them a sense of, hey, we got pride in this house and this house looks good now and we're proud of it and gave Cecil that independence.
It's just made me happier knowing that we're safer. My grandkids are safer when they come, you know.
That's a lot of worries about us, so we, we argue that sometimes.
Okay, so as the last workshop, we did see the video. One of the things I forgot to let you know about was Cecil was a veteran. He was a veteran of the U.S. Army. What we do, just try to explain how this repair process works with seniors. Most of the seniors we serve have less than thirty thousand dollars of income. So that's when they said, call me, stop by and say, hey, how do you help with the roof repair? So our process is we take an application from them, they complete it, there's some paperwork they have to turn in. Then I review that process to make sure, one, is the income range where it should be, under sixty percent of the average median income for their family size. Do they own the home, is it dated in their name? If it's a life estate, will the family who has that be willing to sign up? If it's a mobile home, do they own the land at the mobile home since then? So it hits those criterias and we go out and do a home assessment. We look at the whole house, inside, outside, top to bottom. Then, once we get the home assessment, we see how much money it's been a cost to do this work. We develop a work order. Now, the work order would be based upon what's the needs. Is it a roof issue, is it a heat and air unit, is it a bathroom remodel? So we look at the important things. You know, if a house is leaking, first thing's gonna be the roof. It gotta be set and dry. After that, we're looking at, is the HVAC unit? Do they have heat, do they have air? Beyond that, usually we get to the part where we run out of the money that we had to repair, which could be a bathroom remodel, handicap ramp. So that's where we look at, we kind of drill down, we talk with the family and talk to them about, here's what we can do to help you at the work orders. Then we meet with the family, meet with subcontractors, I get the bids from the subcontractors. Then we decide who we're using. Once we get that all decided, the family signs off, then we go out and do the work with the subcontractors. Once subcontractors completed, I follow over the family, I bring the home inspector out there, we do a final inspection, we sign off, the family signs off on the paperwork. At that point, the family will be signed into five-year restrictive covenant. So that way, that protects our interest if the family decides they want to turn around and sell this home on the open market, flip it on us. They have a five-year restrictive covenant that's filed with the Register of Deeds. We do ask the families to provide a cost for that. So as I go to file to the Register of Deeds, the twelve fifty, thirteen bucks, the family has to provide to us and we give them a receipt. So they got some skin in the game. As far as doing any sweat equity with us, most of these families are aging, they really can't get out and help. So we ask them, if you can provide bottled water for these subcontractors. Sometimes we'll even provide a lunch for them on site. So it's nice to see that the family has stepped up a little bit. So that's pretty much the process of the Critical Repair Program and the quick snapshot. We do have a couple buckets that Tony mentioned earlier, one was the Repair to Rebuild. Apparently, we're sitting on a veteran who is a senior on Church Street. We did an assessment about three, four years ago on the home. But what we found is the home, the whole foundation's getting out. So to put any repair money into that home is chasing bad. So what we're trying to do is what we call the Repair to Rebuild, where we take the entire home down, the family's on board with this. We rebuild on the one or two-bedroom home based on the family's size. But right now, we're, we're trying to find the money to do this. With referendum passes, you know, that gives us an opportunity to service veterans.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Now, we're at time, so...
No, you're good, go, thank you, Tony.
So, you know, this, this is an example of how Habitat might start with one particular activity with a mission-driven focus, you know, helping the community, similar to what Zach was talking about in terms of, you know, we're, we're wanting to help the community as a whole. And we come across situations where it, it's just not something that's getting addressed for no good reason, it's not anybody's fault. Repair to Rebuild is a good example of that. But why is that all needed? And some of the basic stats is, it's just simple, that when you have a housing stock where half of the houses in Lenore City are fifty years old or more and twenty percent of your, your, twenty to twenty-five percent of your population are seniors, that means you have a large group of families that are vulnerable, living in houses with lead-based paint. And to bathe lead-based paint is not cheap. And those families, and this is something that Ms. Petty, we're looking to in the videos, look at what they did, look at what we did, look at what we, what we can do. We can set up somebody where it's a, it can be more than an all or nothing situation. You know, they get a ramp and all the other things that we, we provide, the roof, porch, patio, where they get nothing. And if they get nothing, everybody suffers. The family suffers, the neighbors suffer, they can't even have, have their grandkids come up with it. But now they could. And, and so that's part of it, is that you don't wanna have grandkids in a house with lead-based paint, right? There were still things left undone with that house that we could have helped with. We didn't have the funds for it, we ran out of, we ran out of buckets of money. And this opportunity gets us there. Not because it helps Habitat, it helps Habitat provide to this community in a way that is meaningful and impactful. I wanna be conscientious of time. So Mayor, what, what's my...
Let's, let's open up City Council here and then just stay right there and we'll, we'll open up City Council. You can finish, if there are any questions, City Council, you can, you can answer those, you will. Okay, it is six o'clock, so I call City Council for Monday, December eighth, two thousand twenty-five. No real call before.
McNamara. Walberg. Kennedy. Here. Shields. Here. Brandon. Here.
I don't think our pastor is here. Okay, so I'll ask everyone, please stand, please stand in the pledge and ask the Councilman, Paul Hendy, please, in that question.
Okay, let us pray. God, we thank you for this day that you've given to us today. Let us not take it for, for granted, Lord, as we come into this place, this municipal center, Lord, that we would do the people's business, that we would do it fairly and do it just. Be with us tonight as we make decisions that impact our community and our fellow citizens. In Jesus' name, we ask and pray, amen.
Amen. I'll ask Councilman James Brandon to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if there's any changes to the previous minutes, I'll most approve those. First, Mr. Shields, that's second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Brandon, pro call.
McNamara.
Aye.
Walberg.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
I don't have anything, so I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and everyone has a good Christmas. Let us remember too, and I apologize, Ms. Walberg, I should've said something. Mr. uh, uh, Mr. Kennedy about this, but let us remember the Lottair family. Ms. Walberg just lost her father and, and we unfortunately would've been there probably, but we're thankful about you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And reports from City Council. Just time to, to have most of them approve the agendas, right?
Like a mo.
First, Mr. Brandon, that's second. Second, Mr. Kennedy, pro call.
McNamara.
Aye.
Walberg.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Just time to everyone here to like comment on Sunday night's agenda. All right, I'm gonna pause here just a second and...
Mr. Mayor.
Miss Me.
I'm, I'm sorry, wait there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I actually am just here tonight representing the Downtown Merchants Association. I know we have an item-only agenda tonight to close Broadway on Sunday ninth to fourteenth, from four to eight. This is a new event we're having downtown, we're gonna have luminaries. We've got about four hundred to put out, we've got Santa, we've got, I think, a fire engine that's gonna be down there for pictures and we've got some food and music. And so, we are just asking permission to close Broadway from Kingston Street to B Street.
Yeah, your agenda says four thirty to seven thirty, but she's corrected it to four eight. Correct.
Initially, she had said four thirty to seven thirty and everybody, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, no objections, Tony, go ahead, turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. I left this slide up here that Chris talked about just to emphasize the importance of process. This is a process that we didn't create, this process that we actually developed over a couple different funding sources. The models that they use include HUD and their home program, which the city is familiar with, also with USDA, they have a grant program for rural areas that we tap into. It's also with the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati, which is a membership organization for financial institutions. And there are several others that are a part of that type of process so that we can have independent assessments, we can have accountability, that the homeowner knows exactly what they're going to be seeing in terms of a repair and what they're not. We do have, some of the tasks that are involved do include volunteers and they are fully vetted in terms of background checks. Typically, we're bringing in the folks that have the higher skill levels for these types of activities because they're more sophisticated. Sometimes you don't know what you're dealing with until you've started the project. But this is something where we, we take it very seriously because there's a lot of accountability at stake. There's a lot of public trust that's at stake, not just with this particular funding opportunity, but for all the funding opportunities that, that we come across. In this process, when you look at it, when, we don't actually pull money from any funding source that's a third-party funding source until that last block, the signed certificate completion final papers. Habitat fronts all of the expenses. So at any point in time, if there's a discrepancy about the work, none of the funding sources are really coming into play and are, are being pulled into question. We're taking that risk on the front end. That's exactly how we would do it with this opportunity should it come our way. We would go through the same process and that, after things have been certified and at the end, we would draw down funds. Those funds would be held in a separate banking account, not co-mingled with any other funds. We would aim to have an interest-bearing and that interest would feed back into the direct services that are provided in Lenore City with these funds. So I wanted to make sure that that information was, was made available. We are talking about healthier homes, preserving the, the neighborhood. We're talking about using less raw land, open space. We're trying to use existing structures to keep affordable housing attainable here in Lenore City. And we're looking at savings to those families, lowered utility costs. When we go in there, we're doing things that affect the energy bill. We're improving the sewer systems, which then improves the water bill. So, th- these have some peripheral benefits, some ripple effects that are beneficial not just for the individual, but also for the community. Going back to Ms. Betty, who said, I know our, our neighbors are happy. There is an aesthetic value to this and it's not placing judgment on why that disrepair is happening. There is a life cycle in every community, you guys know this. Wear and tear happens, even with the best of caretakers. What we don't want is a community that's pulling in a great deal of tourism to have neighborhoods that look a little rough around the edges and we are in a position to do something about that. We don't want our seniors, our, our veterans, our individuals of any sort to be living in homes that they worked hard for, decades, contributed to the community, to be in a position where they can't even think about it because they've gotta worry about utilities, food, and medicine. So I'm going back to this four-pack, this four-bucket piece that I mentioned earlier. And we talked about the Critical Repair Program here. And we're talking about the Rebuild Program, Chris mentioned that. Taking an existing home, replacing with stick build, this might be a mobile home, it might be a, a foundation build home. This is important to distinguish because there's not a lot of funding out there that allows us to do that. So if there's not funding out there to do it, what we have are situations like what's happening on Church Street where it could've been fixed for maybe seventy thousand three years ago, but now it's gonna be a hundred and ten because the cost of everything has gone up. And when I say everything, the things that are really big-ticket items, I'm talking about the HVAC. We used to be doing HVAC units brand-new for sixty-five hundred dollars, then they popped up to eight thousand. They're now at twelve thousand. That's, that's all in the last ten years. That's big. And you know what, somebody at thirty thousand dollars a year is not gonna be able to afford that. And then you throw in a roof, that's a whole other thing. A lot of the homes that we come across don't even have good insulation. So we're hitting all kinds of data points with impact, adverse impact on people's health and on their pocketbooks and our aesthetic value. From the health side of it, we're talking about emergency room visit. When somebody has an asthma attack or they trip because they're on shag carpet from the seventies, they're in the hospital room, they're in the emergency room. And that's two thousand dollars just walking in the door. That's happening multiple times a month. If they hurt themselves in a more serious way, and I mentioned this last week, we're talking about assisted living at a six-digit figure, a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're thinking ahead of that. And this is not a unique opportunity to Lenore City. This is a program that is developing across the country, not just with Habitat, but with organizations of all, all walks of life. Because they know we have aging population and we have an aging housing stock. How do we really lead into this? The other two is the Community Partnerships and the Modern Income Support. Probably, number four, Modern Income Support is probably the easier to explain. The housing impact right now is having a pretty hard effect on modern income families. Now, if you don't know what modern income families are, we're talking to people, about people households that make an average amount of income compared to everybody else. Habitat traditionally works with low-income families, people who are making about half of the average. So maybe a little bit more. Well, with modern income families, there are no resources out there to help them. So these numbers I just talked about with the HVAC and the plumbing and the roof, you know, that's something that, it's not just being felt with somebody who's on a fixed income and they're a senior, it's being felt by everyday middle-class citizens, middle-income citizens. So we're looking at, how can we create a program that can assist them with repairs? The other program, you know, the Community Partnerships, this is something that we already do in terms of collaborating with different organizations in town. But there are a number of organizations that are housing-adjacent. And what I mean by that is that they help individuals that are the same population profile that Habitat does, but it's not with housing. They help them with some other aspect. Maybe it's drug recovery, maybe it's victims of human trafficking or perhaps it's some other piece that they're working through and they're being provided housing. They don't have income. So we partner with that organization so that those facilities can be maintained. That's the Community Partnership side. Maybe there's a way we can be a partner in this community, bringing funds to the table in a way that elevates the impact. The other piece is that there are a number of buildings in the community that are vacant. They're commercial, they're offices, maybe they're warehouses. Is there a way that we can repurpose those, redevelop those into affordable housing? I think there is. This could be a part of the Housing and Community Preservation Fund. So, our vision here is first, let's start with what we already have in place, Critical Repair Program, and less than this, less than that, let's keep, get that injected with some, some good support, move into the rebuild and then develop three and four. We may find out that in eighteen months, three and four don't make sense. But we will still making a hu, will still be making a huge impact in this community just with one and two. And that's, that's good. But let's leave the door open so we can do more. Accountability and transparency. This is the last part of our presentation, so... Let me dig right into this. Because we work with federal dollars already, we have a full financial audit that's completed every year. We have an I-90 that's submitted to the IRS every year. We have annual, quarterly, semi-annual reports provided throughout the year to those funders. With the Critical Repair Program in particular, those reports, the dispers, dispersments themselves must include the invoices that we use, that, that we're reimbursing. So there is a very annual level of our, our accountability, our oversight with that. The funder is seeing what we're doing. That is the type of approach that we would use with this, if it's afforded, our, our, it's an afforded opportunity. This is something that feeds right into community trust and that's what we would bring to you all, is some kind of mechanism annually to ensure that you all have an understanding of what's happening with this program, what's happening with the funds and that you, there was never any kind of question of the integrity, stewardship of it from Habitat. So with that, let me, um, let me ask you if you have any additional questions and I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? Member City Council, have any questions? Tony, thank you so very much and, and I hope that City Council will, will continue to support this and, and I think it can be a good thing to, for seniors and veterans and, and our folks that, that needs assistance. I think it's a good program and certainly it would be a fit for us to recommend tremendously. So, I hope that, that it gets supported and we can get it on about it. Just remind everyone, City Council, I don't know if they have, they're in term of public, if they don't know. You know, City Council's putting it on the ballot. It's up to the people of Lenore City to decide and, and we told them the need. So it'll, it'll be up to the people to decide whether or not they want to do it or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody on? All right, item number one is to consider this City Council, I promise the mayor and the mayor to enter into a board of members, or, Ben Brandon, of understanding with the Loudoun County Habitat and manage with the purpose of establishing a partnership and promote affordable housing and address critical repair and renovation needs within the city of Lenore City. critical repair and renovation needs within the city of Loomer City. And Mr. Kennedy, I apologize, I should I ask, because I know you said on several meetings with myself and Habitat, because I asked you because of the line of work that you're in, and I don't care about opportunity, but I wanted to particularly thank you for all your thoughts and sharing your expertise with us during the meetings that we had. Do you have anything else you would like to add?
Nothing really to add, just to thank Habitat for their expertise as well, and their proven track record. We, I shouldn't say we compete for the same kind of funding, I manage a nonprofit as well in Knox County that does very similar work, and so I know the obstacles that Tony and his team are up against. And I know they're a tried and true organization that's well-known throughout the state for their experience and expertise, and I'm sure if this referendum passes, the public's, the public vote, they'll do a wonderful job. I know, I live in the grid, you know, the older part of town, so, you know, within two blocks of me, there are several tarps on roofs and widows, you know, if I mention their names, everybody here would probably know who they are, there's people that need help. And it's not a, it's not a play on heartstrings or sympathetic thing, but it's, it's a real need. And so I hope the public will consider this wholeheartedly. It's not a money grab, it's something that really is needed. So I appreciate Habitat's being here, and obviously Parks and Rec as well, it's the bigger portion of this really is Parks and Rec, but both, everyone's done a great job.
I'll remind everyone, it's, to put it more in perspective, it's seventy-five cents on one hundred dollars worth of groceries. So seventy-five cents on one hundred dollars worth of groceries.
Can I add one more thing, Mayor?
Yes.
I was emailing back and forth with Sean the other day about the finances, and I just want to put this in perspective a little bit. So we're currently at nine percent, and so out of the nine percent, the state gets seven of those cents, correct, Sean?
Correct.
The other, the other two cents is divided between city and county, is that correct? So there's one penny left from every dollar of purchases in the city. But that one penny is divided four ways, and school system gets three of those. So for every dollar that's spent, the city general government collects one-fourth of a penny. And so I know there's other streams of revenue here with fees and court costs and property taxes and so forth, but really and truly, the city has been good stewards of the sales tax money, but maybe because there's not much of it, really. And so I commend the finance department, and there's, you know, people will say, cut this budget, or look at this, well, there's not really, there's not really much meat to cut, because there's not much to start with. So I just want everybody to know that out of nine cents collected, the city's really only getting a fourth of a penny currently. And so I just want that to be known, because in social media land, it gets pretty misconstrued pretty fast.
There's a lot of things get misconstrued in social media, but thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for bringing that up, very good one. I want to add too, that Loudoun City, if I'm not terribly mistaken, Mr. Calso, you correct me if I'm wrong, they're at the maximum, they're at the highest, they passed it for their Parks and Rec only several years ago, to support the Parks and Rec down there. So Loudoun City, seven miles down the road, has the tax, the maximum that they can collect, and obviously it shows with their Parks and Rec. All right, enter our discussion. Entertained motion?
I would make a motion to approve a agenda of one.
All right, and to, obviously, the number two will get into putting it on the agenda, but I'll put it on, send it to the executive commission as first read. Mr. Kennedy makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Walber, or Mr. Brandon, either one, Mr. Walber, pro cap.
Manam.
Aye.
Walber.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Motion class. I'll number two, consider as the city council, I'll be the attorney general, Mr. Seagull, request a referendum to raise sales and use tax at City of Loomer City, Tennessee, from two percent to two and three-quarters, or one percent to one-seventy-five, for the sport of the Housing and Community Preservation Fund through Loudoun County Habitat, for humanity given preference to assisting seniors, veterans, and individuals with disabilities, and the funding to approve of the Loomer City Parks and Rec, the improvement of the Loomer City Parks and Rec Department, and planning and executing the expansion of the City of Loomer City's recreational field and facilities. This is first read. Entertained motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Mr. Kennedy makes a motion, have a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Shields, discussion, pro cap.
Manam.
Aye.
Walber.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
I, three, consider as the person, person community's renovation authority purchase of two vehicles for the usage of drug fund, drug task force fund, the new vehicles from subcontractor, and one used one from Jack Jones School, person community, very advanced, very wide, Chief Bright, UK Commons.
No, Mayor, I just, I just would want to add that this, we are the fiduciary for the non-traditional drug task force, these funds come in through the DTF office, and we just manage those, so it's not out of our, it's not out of the ownership of drug funds, it's out of their, their own money. We just have to run the figure on since we are the fiduciary.
True. You heard his explanation, any discussion? Entertained motion? Motion by the police commissioner, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shields, discussion, pro cap.
Manam.
Aye.
Walber.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Second. Second, Mr. Brandon, discussion, pro cap.
Manam.
Aye.
Walber.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Mayor, see, that's true.
No, sir, I don't have anything, it's not, thank you to everybody for coming and presenting.
All right, just time for one of your like comments on something else, again. You have a business? Entertained motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to approve all bills to be paid when properly approved and the funds are available.
Mr. Walber makes motion to pay the bills, have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Brandon or Mr. Shields, pro cap.
Manam.
Aye.
Walber.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Shields.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Return, make a call.